If you're not, it's obviously about a conversation around it. I think this might be of interest.
Sure, thank you. If you haven't been online yet today, I'd want to let you know that we have sent out a press release letting everyone know that the contract parking is being amended. We won't be working with them for the holistic parking management program that did include paid parking. We will be working with them this summer, though, to help us provide some analytics so that we can have a better conversation with the community as well as help enforce the laws that we already have on our books. So, are here to talk about that. You obviously still can, but wanted to let you know of that in case that helped you. And we'll have more as we continue with this process.
Okay, I have a half sheet, so we're going to get going. One last call. Anybody who hasn't signed up that wants to go in, going. First up, we have Tom Winston, AKA Chief. Oh, there are some additional chairs up if anyone wants to get comfortable?
They're right there.
And there's, okay.
Hi, guys. My name is T.W. Winston, also known as Run the High Side Bar and Grill with my wife Angela. Here to talk about F Street closure. If the city has a plan for this closure, I am all for it. Cities of Fort Collins and Denver all have ped malls. They are nice and well thought about, okay? Now, I do not believe the city has a plan for the ped mall. Can couches and old chairs out there, you know, like, I mean, is there rules? I don't know. Does everyone have to participate in the closure? Some businesses do, businesses don't, which, you know, like I said, looks like a swap meet. Is the actual point of closing two blocks? Businesses already have the most foot traffic in town. There are plenty of parks, aisles for people to walk, stroll, meander, et cetera, all in town. What we don't have is parking. There is a huge parking problem. Street park is the only parking the city actually owns. So, if someone decided to develop our leased parking, all of our other parking is leased. I think I'm correct on that. It would be terrible for the parking situation if the guy by the gas say, "You know what? You guys can't use this anymore." That'd be really detrimental to our town. If we close, if we leave the street open this year, it would also add real, real-time data for profit, loss, sales, all of the above. So, I'm just asking you, please either have a plan about it and think about the citizens. This isn't like a warm and fuzzy, like, "Oh, Mr. Ride His Bike To The Ice Cream Shop." That's all nice, but, you know, our town's not based on emotion. We should be based on logic, okay? Thank you very much.
And then next up, Patrick Gentile.
Hi. Hi, Patrick Gentile. I've lived, I was born here. I moved back when disabled. And when you guys close the street, you make it really, really difficult for people like me. I can walk all amount of distances. And when you close that street, I can't, I can't enjoy. I've lived here. I should be able to enjoy my hometown without having the world fall on my face. Now, if you guys want to close that street, I think whatever you want anyway. But if you want to close it, I'd like to have each of your names and phone numbers so when I want to go downtown, I can give you guys, you can take me down there so I don't have to walk and worry about down and hurting myself more than I am now. You know, we have, are paid for by our vehicle taxes, all of our taxes. And you guys closing them is just making it really, really difficult for disability, disabled people like myself. I'm not, I'm not political, and I apologize if I'm not talking straight. Don't use the wrongology. But when we, it's hard for us to get away. You know, every time I wake up, I worry about, "What can I do?" Now, I used to go down, went, I'd go downtown and I saw an ice cream parlor down there. They have great ice cream. When you guys close that street down, you close me down. And I, and that's just really unfair for people who have abilities like myself or even worse than I do. I know, are in a wheelchair, they, their granddaughters or grand will downtown so they could see it. But when you close the street, they can't even do that. I think closing F Street down is the wrong thing for this town. You know, you see people walking up and down that street all the time, really buying, not in their sightseeing, but you walking that road hurts people that want to go enjoy it. Thanks.
Thank you. And try on this next one. Is it Jan? Is it Latimer? Did I get that right? Okay, great.
It's Jane Latimer.
Thanks. See you coming.
And I think that you guys have covered a lot of what I'm here for.
And would you mind, in front of the mic, you might want to bring that down a little?
No, I'm gonna leave it down. Now, I moved here 15 or 16 years ago, but I had been coming Salida for 30-some years. And I'm, and blocking, I mean, having the blocking of the streets point because you watch the people go in in one store, they go into several, then go to their car and get in, purchasing more than just parking in front of a store, getting out, going to or getting back in and leaving. They, by blocking the streets has helped, I would say, some of the stores, not all of them.
Online that are listening.
And then, um, the people, the handicapped, though, they cannot walk two, three, four blocks because they got canes, wheelchair. I know I can't walk that far because I've had three back surgeries to toe, shoulder, and foot. I'm, I'm, I don't say I'm handicapped, watch how close I can park to go where I need to go. And if you block off the streets, I think you should consider places where the handicap could be within a block or block of where they want to go. And the same way with the fire department. There was a fire downtown. That should be somehow, some way access for the stores so they don't get burnt down. And that's history. And that Salida brick and the beauty of that, or tenderfoot, I call it S-mountain to people too. But, you know, the beauty of Salida slowly slipping away over the years that I've been here. And that's a, and I hope all of you, you're younger than I am by a lot, and I hope you will take that into consideration of key beauty in the history of Salida. That's really, I have people coming from, I'm from Iowa originally, coming from Iowa, Kansas, coming out here to see me, and I take them here to the mountains and downtown. The beauty and the history. And I don't know how we could get that across to a lot of people, but that's important. And, um, let's see. I do have one negativity. I do still in the county somehow, some way. But they're selling the, on the other side of the mountain, on the other side of the river, I mean. And some of that should not be.
Thanks, your time is up. Thank you very much.
You guys, take care.
Yeah, thank you. Steve O'Neill is next.
My name is Steve O'Neill. And throughout the many years of owning the Pilates Studio in town here, I worked with dozens of clients who were injured, who had surgery, who had foot problems, who had problems, who had shoulder problems. And I worked with them for a long time on patient, trying to get their balance back, trying to get them to walk again, to have the confidence to go out of their own homes. And so, it's made with these people, but they still have fear. They have a fear of going outside, of walking in the streets, of they have to walk to get any place to buy something. They're worrying about on sidewalks, they're worrying about falling down, they're worrying about their own balance, and it's them to not go outside. Because their main complaint is parking, or specifically the lack of parking during the summer. This causes them to have to, and they refuse to do that because it's not safe. They all the ability to have someone drive them downtown because sometimes they can't drive themselves. Quite often, that person has to drop them off in the summertime, a few blocks away from where they're going to go. And then that person has to leave them, find a place to park away from the downtown area, and then come back and pick them up again. We are leaving a person who is handicapped by themselves on the street with fear of walking, stumbling, their own personal balance. So, many of them will not stand up and say something because they're used to not being considered. They're used to being a forgotten in our community. I've asked them many, many a times, "Why don't you talk to us?" They just will ignore us anyway. We're not a very big population here. They are not feeling that they're being considered in the parking plan community. In other words, they're not, they're used to being not considered at all. But as our population grows, they get older and older, and they will be having more and more physical issues as time goes on. They will have to deal with them, and ultimately, the city will have to deal with them, not to spend their money locally. But as of right now, during the summertime, it's safe for them to be walking any distance. They would love to spend here, but it's safer them, safer for them to spend it online. Please keep the F Street open during the summer. It's for and a very, very important part of our community. Thank you.
And next up, Kate.
If you vote to close down, then you are showing that your civility occasion is mere words that you indeed, as town council, ignore. The language that you declare and affirm a policy of non-disability on the basis of medical condition, physical disability, is unsupported by the fact that for the last four years, you have systematically discriminated against the physically handicapped in the I represent 38 handicapped individuals in our community. Their ages range from nine to 70s. They are all ambulatory challenged and members from all of the wards that you represent. Let's see. None of you is ambulatory challenged. The ADA is their minimum standard for helping the handicapation. A number of you throw around that haphazardly to continue to discriminate against one of the most vulnerable populations of our community. Tell my aunt, who is 21 years old, who has MS and only walk with Richie braces and canes, she will be fine while her mother drops her off, has to stand there for 15 exits at least while her mother finds confined parking spot because of the F Street closure. So she's paralyzed and fair, as Steve O'Neill mentioned. Unlike businesses, which can apply for permits for extra space, the handicap have no choice but to not participate in their own town. It's just wrong. Let's see. So, Councilwoman, you suggested, it's gonna be real, you suggested a partial closing. That takes away 40 parking spots. And even partially close that down, it hurts a handicap.
Thanks, thanks. Okay. Chris Nasca.
This up a little bit. I'm Chris, owner, business owner of Broken String Guitars, 105 North F Street. Been in business for 12 years downtown and three years the new location. Chavy County resident of 28 years. Definitely not in favor of parking spots downtown and closure of F Street for a limited area of two, losing valuable parking since we strapped, since we're strapped for parking. Downtown access deters some of the population of town, elderly, disabled, ADA, and most importantly, my, I have clients that won't come down to my business because it's hassle for them to bring instruments and for repair and servicing. We provide a service since clients have to walk several blocks, do not want to carry heavy or multiple guitars to my shop. Since access is tough or limited, cater to a strong local clientele. All spectrum of this as well. We do have some tourist tax dollars. My sales tax, I make for this city, come from that percentage. Speaking tax dollars, this is what it's all about, generating a healthy economy for all. I have an elderly employee, Joe Sargoncheck, Lutheran string repair instrument specialist that has both hips replaced. He does not have, and does the specialized repair work. These skilled folk come around and land in these small towns very often. I'll lose this if he decides not to come to work at my shop. Thing is, there's no parking, it's getting more difficult to get to the shop. Trust me, special arrangement arrangements previously for him to park so he can work up. Shutting down major street artery isn't a good idea. Fire trucks, access, American Disabilities Act, the general public safety and all its aspects. Purpose of the street is for transportation, also for pedestrians. I think we're making something that originally, originally was not used for. There are parks throughout downtown in a Salida area for special events. Who's paying for the extra street insurance? You guys think? Will insurance companies cover us? Nobody thought about. My personal opinion is that we need to attract an exploratory to conduct the correct data for the proposed pedestrian walkway and mall. Team, there's only an online survey. This excluded so many people, nobody got to comment. You guys didn't get that, I'll tell everybody. Put money into the development of making a mall on F Street. Are the funds available?
Hey, Chris. Okay, thanks. And just so everyone knows, I want to be fair to everyone. Allow Kay an extra 20 or so seconds. So if someone is close and they want to finish the thought, I'll allow it tonight, but not next time, but in Pandora's Box.
Are the funds available to make this into a building friendly zone? Salida will need some planning and forward thinking to put this into reality. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Harry Hanson.
Good evening, Council. Harry Hanson, Riveting Experience Jewelry, went on I and F Street. I think we're all kind of saying a lot of the same thing. I don't disagree with Chief, I don't disagree with Chris. I see the value from my business. I'm also speaking for Nikki Mainz, who couldn't make it to Zai Candy. I can speak directly to the benefit for us. I can't speak for the whole downtown corridor. Questions are very similar. Do we have a plan? Can we make a plan? I think we've been a little haphazard about it the last years, but what I would really like to see more than anything is a conversation with all the parties because none of us as business owners exclude the disabled or the parade organizers or any of that. I firmly believe that if we can get those parties in a room and we about the issues, you know, the fire department, absolutely, nobody wants to see the downtown. We need better access to all of that. But we're a community of people. I feel like if we could get this conversation going with each of these groups, it is possible to do something amazing with downtown when we have a parking issue. Me, as a business owner, for our business, the closure has been extremely beneficial as it has been for Nikki. And it could be better. And it require, it's going to require buy-in from you, the city, and from us as the merchants. But I think it could be amazing, but we have a plan. And that's pretty much, that's where I'm at. If we can't make a plan, solid one, I don't know what the future is with it. I'd like to see it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Eaton.
Chris Eaton, I both live and own a business downtown. So, ice cream's an important part of this story because when partner and I were identifying Salida as the best place to open our art gallery, the art community was the most important thing. But one of the things we noticed over the last few is how many ice cream shops are downtown and how late they stay open. That told us how much foot traffic and how much business there was in downtown Salida. And closed F Street creates an atmosphere where people can amble about, out, buy ice cream, even at 10 o'clock at night. The informal petition of us, you know, did a few weeks ago, I personally prefer street businesses because I'm a first street business, and everyone I was, except for two, were totally in favor of the F Street closure, were ambivalent, essentially like, "It doesn't hurt me, it doesn't help me," to still sign the petition in support of it, though. And so, that, it's an important aspect to all of our businesses. And yes, are there things solved? You know, handicap parking, yes, I'm all in favor of making as much handicap along First Street, Second Street, Sackett, whatever that needs to be done to enough parking for these people to have the shortest walk as possible. Dressing the barrier issue, I sent this to Justin Ant, but this is, this Archer 1200 mobile barrier is Palisade acquired for their farmers markets. So basically, people load in, when the farm is open, cars are out, these things are rolled in in a matter of minutes, dropped in place, and they become vehicle barriers that prevent any kind of vehicle from getting into the place. And then when that was over with, they quickly move them out of the way. So these would be extremely easy thing, quick to install, quick to open up for both emergencies and parades. And unlike some of the solutions I've heard on previous conversations, this is not $250 or $500,000 solution. This is a much cheaper solution for this problem, for that kind of access. I'm almost out of the number of these things I'm going to have to leave behind, but I'd like to add.
I will give you an extra half a minute.
Okay, thanks. You know, the walking mall creates a great community, as I said before. Another thing I'd like to add to this that's related to the parking as well, it was mentioned in one of the work sessions by company that they seem to think that the ideal time, turnover time, was two to two and a half hour for someone downtown. And I would say that is far short of what most of us would want. Not enough time to properly shop and take in a meal, let alone add time in the river, et cetera. So I think we need to take that into consideration in both these issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and thank you for the more comfy seating.
I write it for it, but I can't. Okay, and then Dave Earl.
This is Dave Earl. I've lived here in Salida about 25 years, 25 years plus. I just, I don't have anything written out. I just am in favor of shutting F Street down. I think it's been a good asset the last few years that we've done it here, slows people down, less, less, and just gives people opportunity to, to downtown at a slower pace. Thank you very much.
And then Carrie Mesh.
My name is Carrie Mesh. I am managing member of Full Views Matter and a party to the Poncha sewer lawsuit. There are other parties involved, speaking only for our LLC. In 2020, we built River Ridge Sub coming the first to successfully complete a subdivision with deed restricted housing after the adoption of Salida's Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. When the Poncha Meadows presented to us, we saw it as an opportunity to continue designing and building lots for the valley hundreds of attainable housing options. We are not able to move forward with our, due to Salida's denial of our sewer extension agreement. Prior to closed property, we performed extensive due diligence. Part of that included a review of the intergovernmentals between Poncha and Salida, the IGA's. In 2010, I'm the sole owner of the system and the recipient of Poncha's prepaid fees, all future fees and monthly rates. We also reviewed a city council work session, number 5, 2018. David Lady in Salida's Water Attorney, Delala, gave a thorough review of the IGA's and status of the Poncha. David informed council that eventually the trunk line would need expansion and Salida should get in front of the planning and financing. He showed a map of Pontri's and stated that there is trunk line capacity for all of the property yellow to be built out. A large portion of that yellow area includes our, to date, it is just 20% built out. Yet, in April, Nelson denied a request sewer extension due to trunk line capacity. Jennifer quoted the IGA's. Upon the transfer date, Salida shall assume a medial duty and responsibility for financing, operating, maintaining, improving, expanding the sewer property serving conscious springs, existing and futurements in service area. Salida shall have the sole responsibility and authorities, fees, charges, and penalties necessary for the operation, maintenance, improvement, and expansion of the sewer system. Salida agrees to charge springs customers at the same rates as its in-city customers. Opinion that the IGA's were written with the intent to ensure that Salida could move exactly what they are doing, inhibiting Poncha growth versus being it. Ensuring capacity is the responsibility of Salida. Now, I understand that many of you have inherited this lawsuit. Urge you to do your own research. I welcome meeting with any of you. This is an opportunity to reset and resolve it because ultimately, to make the decision of how we resolve it, not our attorneys. Thank you, and let's get it built.
Thank you. And then next up, we have Katie Blanton.
City council members, Mr. Mayor, Katie Blanton.
City Council members, Mr. Mayor, Katie Blanton. I am a resident of SLIDA for about 10 years, coffee by Topo. My job as a business owner, advocate for the health of my business and the well-being of my employees. The job, as I understand it, is to listen to your constituents and to advocate. The job of the city staff and administration is to listen to the city council and find solutions to the problems that we face as a community. Many of the businesses and patrons want the F Street pedestrian mall, and we do largely benefit from the blocking traffic that it lends. We also, without a doubt, need more ADA access and parking. People also want traditions and parades back. We have to have good fire access as well. These are the asks from the people, and I do believe that there are solutions. Things are not mutually exclusive, and the solutions are not insurmountable. This past week, I reached out to all of you regarding my stance on the F Street closure and my, just the current resolution you all will be voting on, excluding the businesses between Second Street. So I'm here asking for an amendment to include the half-block street between Second and Third in the closure, as it has been for the last three years. I ask all of you on city council to trust that the amazing folks are capable of finding solutions. Listen to the business owners that want this closure, because it's more revenue for the city and creates a better cultural experience for locals and tourists alike. Solutions for ADA access, period. Let's make the parades happen. Let's get fire access. There are solutions within reach. That's not my expertise. So again, my ask for all of you is to make an amendment to include the second and a half block of F Street in the resolution this evening and to pass the pedestrian mall on F Street and to find solutions to the issues we're facing as a community. Thank you for listening, and thank you for-
Thank you. Hannah Michaels.
Hello. I'm really going to speak to that first, because my heart is pounding crazy, and I think that it helps. So I'm super nervous right now. I'm Hannah Michaels. I'm owner of The Nest on Highway 50. I've been here seven years and in the community. I'm sorry I am late to the F Street closure party, to eat more ice cream with the F Street closure. Like, without a doubt. So does my kid. I feel that the culture downtown is much more vibrant than ever since SLIDA, and it continues to grow and take a positive shape. I believe this is a large part due to the closure. I'm a mother of a nine-year-old who is an avid roller, like myself, and we are very into that skate culture of SLIDA, so really building, and I think a huge part of our community. We roller skate down on the F Street closure all the time. We go and meet our friends. We ride our bikes. We eat, we eat ice cream again two hours later. I'm not kidding. We eat a lot of ice cream down there. Pizza and everything, and because we hang out longer periods of time, because we walked or rode our bike, or I spend two, three, four times the money in that visit than if, if F Street wasn't closed. I mean, I actually probably go there three or four times as much with her. I know ramps and alleys is really for it, too, and know it helps, it helps my business. I teach roller dance, so having that really vibrant downtown skate culture benefit to other local small businesses that I can name. Okay, I think that there's creative ways to make this for the disabled and elderly. Some thoughts that I had, have some dedicated spaces on the side streets that are local, disabled, and elderly, like they could have parking passes of some to go and, and get, get this. And they can, are the only ones who can use it. I'll shuttle in town for the disabled and elderly. I used it for my mother-in-law once. It's for you column. They come and pick you up right there. Really, really, really easy. They have like the little, they can, you know, hydraulic her on up there, take her wherever she wants to go. And is that, can, can the alleys be used by the shuttle? Can they get dropped, you know, wherever they ask to be? If there was a better block off situation, that can be easily removed, can the shuttle just go on through? Like, other towns have successfully figured this out. So can we model out for that? Sure, they figured out fire safety. That is not a question that hasn't been asked before. So, yeah. As to the comment of, can we put couch, with no disrespect, can we go out there and things like that? I haven't seen that yet. I haven't seen it look trashed or people putting, you know, weird stuff out there. I think it's, looks pretty elegant and, without it being super regulated thus far. The F Street. So that is taking traction, okay? We have had some sweet stuff go on. We haven't been. We've had block parties. We've had fire performances. We've had an awesome, really cool talent show. People are starting to get excited about it. We're one and a half seasons in. It's been to the F Street stage. And I didn't even know if that half a block might not be included, or hoping it does. If it's not, then where is it going to go? If it's going to be weird that it doesn't have a chance of being successful, can I use the amphitheater stage for Memorial Week's talent show at, for free? Because that's what I need, and I'm not a nonprofit, and I don't-
I gave you an extra thirty.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, bye.
And then next up is Serena.
Yeah, okay. Hi, I'm Serena, 13, from the SLIDA Montessori Charter School. I am pro for closing F Street. I think that closure, closure is one of the many fun things for a SLIDA summer. But I think very important for SLIDA teens, as it gives a space for us to use to come hang out. You will always find someone you know down on the closed F Street. It also brings a sense of safety, too, especially at night with having where there are no cars. SLIDA is very oriented on key, as you guys have shown in the past with a lot of the other organizations, events that you guys have put on. This gives a space for kids to walk and hang out. It keeps, I think, it keeps us out of, who knows what kind of trouble we'd be getting otherwise. But I think it also shows unity really well. It shows like all the different cultures of the different businesses and really, I think, brings SLIDA together and gives us this almost like tower as we don't have, like, like center with like a fountain or some other cities may have. And I think it shows the heart of SLIDA or the Rockies. Thank you.
Thanks, Serena. And next up, it's Vesper. I didn't, I'll have you pronounce the last name.
That's right, Vesper Ger. Hi. Yeah, I, on a similar page, I agree that street closure is pretty vital to SLIDA in terms of being community. It's a real game changer to have a contemporary community to come together and exist without necessarily being, you know, at a business to buy something, to just have a place where people can be, you know, on common ground. Pretty huge as far as, you know, creating the energy of community. It's a very different thing than driving in our own little cars and our own beds, where if you see someone you know, you may realize it's them, you may wave, but it's a very, to run into someone in person, maybe have a conversation. And I feel it brings a vibrancy to SLIDA that would be otherwise long. Of course, I have a lot of compassion for the, and ambulatory disadvantage to access. And like everyone else has said, we do need a plan and more handicaps. Hopefully, there is a win-win here in a good word to accommodate all the needs. I know I go downtown single day at least once for work in the service industry and to use the river noon every day of the year, and I've never not found a park. Sometimes you need to be a little patient, maybe go around the block, or maybe go to the park. But really, the parking shortage is an issue. It's kind of a issue. For Park Weekend, it's big, but we have the community parking lot with the cross streets and the alleys. It's half a block to anywhere. It's not, you'd be lucky to find a parking spot closer than that, even with the F pin. So I think it's worth to have the community able to act common ground. Thanks.
Thank you. And then Stephanie.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Kuhn, and I'm the manager at Murphy Candy Maker. And I am for the closure, the closure. The owner has seen an influx during the summer months, for sure. And I know that that is the tourist season of SLIDA. With the F Street closure, tourists and I believe, cause alike, have that freedom to just kind of slowly meander back and forth and down the street. And they get more time to experience the beauty and the eclecticism of it. That being said, I also do understand the parking restrictions that we have or the lack of for disability, even just all over SLIDA, not F Street. I know my mother-in-law has a very hard time getting around, and so, like, I'm sorry, I don't know the owner of Topo, but like she had said, having the city come together and trying to find some viable option for them, that is a huge concern, I think, seems of the most people that spoke tonight. But overall, having that and having maybe some movable barriers for parades or for fire, I just think that in general, having that is a great community. I guess, kind of brings everyone's awareness for the city and also, too, like I said, for the teenagers and for the kiddos. Just have a safe space to hang out and enjoy the summer months of SLIDA. Thank you.
Do we have anyone online?
We do. We have Adam Martinez.
Okay. Adam, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you loud and clear.
Oh, he muted himself. Adam, you muted yourself. Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can hear you.
Yeah, I would like to comment. I've done a petition against the suitors and, and in essence, I'll be forwarding to all of you guys. And, and the thing of it is, is I think we're wrong. It is, it is not, it is not a, an incentive for downtown, because I've been here for about 30 years, and we have, we have never done this. Guys did, did it for COVID, and now you're wanting to continue, continue this ridiculous thing? Because I was asked of somebody the, the, the other day, tell me, why, why is that Aurora, Aurora Den, Aurora Denver, Arisco, and all these places, why did, why did, they're not doing the street closures anymore, along with Boulder? And why is SLIDA still doing that? And I said, like, you would have to ask as the city council. And the only thing that, just once, is for his constituents, people he knows, because I seen him during the last meeting throw a temper him, because he did not, he, he did not get his way, because, because of the fact of- Justin, Justin needs to understand, this is everybody's community. And, and people have spoken that they do not want this closed. I don't know what part to get about that, and, and it was not overwhelmingly popular. So, and, and I think the way to do that is, is, is instead of doing a survey, bring surveys to business and have their customers fill them out, because you guys are not doing it right, and you guys have not communicated with the public regarding that. And it shouldn't have the sunshine law. Thank you.
And do we have anyone else? Very good. Appreciate everyone showing up and, and some truths. That will take us to new business and 2024-13, a resolution of the city council of the city of SLIDA authorizing the mayor to sign amended pre-annexation agreement to SLIDA School District for 627 Oak Street. Thanks, Catherine.
Good evening, Council. Resolution 2024-13, the amended pre-agreement with the school district is for 627 Oak. It is the school district that is just south of the fire station. And it is in underrated Chaffey County. So the pre-annex agreement is needed in order for the school district to tap into municipal. Typically, a property is annexed, and then they tap into municipal water. But due to the school district's timeline to complete a construction before the start of the next school year, the annexation be effective in time for when they need to tap in based on schedule. So therefore, staff has worked with the school district to prepare it before you tonight. And staff, any questions you may have regarding the terms of this agreement?
Questions? I think we covered them all, but- Did your job?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Councilmember Fontana.
Suzanne, I do have a question.
Can you get closer to your mic? It's-
Sure. So I do have a question today?
Yeah.
My question is, if the school district is paying for sidewalks before that they are, the school district will pay a fee to the city of SLIDA for the construction of your sidewalks, how does it work for the amount of money they pay?
How's it determined?
How's it determined?
So, you mean, how is the amount of money calculated? That fee was calculated between the school district's engineers and our public works director signed off on all of the fees that they proposed.
Okay, so then if the sidewalks are constructed, they have paid too much, do we give them a refund or calculate it pretty much based on per square foot on that amount?
So, the, I mean, I believe that the fees that will be paid, they're done between the engineer and our public works director. So they're based on everything that they know as engine professionals and the costs of construction and what it takes to build these stuffs. So, and, and they're in agreement on those fees. So I don't believe the intention is to add up receipts to, because it'll be part of a larger construction project.
Didn't we go through something similar with the fire station? Similar formula?
I was just gonna, Councilwoman Fontana, our common practice to give back any sort of rebates on fees in lieu. The estimates are based off of the current market values of the materials, labor, et cetera. And if they wanted to, they certainly could come back and request, I suppose, to council at that point. But estimates are, are just that. And in some cases, these numbers end up too low as well. So I, I don't know if it would be the, necessarily be the best practice to be returns on things as, as a standard practice, because we don't always get the full amount that it would actually cost as well.
Would it, would it be fair to say that they can choose to build the sidewalks then rather than pay the fee in lieu as an option?
That, that was discussed, and they, we ended up on the fee in lieu. That was their wish.
Yeah, I have a question. Just because I don't, we don't normally see loos for trees, especially when it comes specifically for 30 trees. Can you just speak to that?
Yeah, so with the trees, we, we agreed to the- Yeah, so with the trees, we, we agreed to the fee in lieu. Once again, the had concerns about the timing of the planting of the trees and how that work with their construction and any future construction. So this was, we agreed to do the fee in lieu route for trees. So that they will pay a fee in lieu upfront for 30, which is a reduced amount from what the site is required. The site would normally be 43. We reduced it because the school had some concern with the number of trees. So with the amount at 300 per tree, which is in the fee schedule for a tree fee in lieu, doesn't usually apply to anything other than a single-family home site. They, we will collect the $9,000, 300. And then once the trees are in leaf, we'll go out and determine how much they have on site that are, that meet our requirements for a healthy seed tree size. And then we will refund back to them. Let's say they have 15s that meet that requirement, then they'll get half that money back, 4,500. The city will keep the other 4,500 and we will use that money to please, not actually on the school district site because that gets complicated with the irrigation that needs to be provided by the property owner since the city can't those trees if they plant them on their site. But the city will, will take those and plant trees. Likely, I think, the purpose being in the neighborhood, the same neighborhood as the school.
Thanks. Any other questions?
Motion?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 2024-13 approving the pre-annexation agreement with Salida School District for 627 Oak Street.
Second. So we have a motion from Councilmember Pappanfort, seconded by Councilmember Cretelli. And the is to approve Resolution Number 2024-13 approving the nation agreement with Salida School District for 627 Oak Street. Further discussion?
Catherine? Do you have something more to say?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Nakarato?
Yes.
Pappanfort?
Yes.
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 Cretelli?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And next up is Resolution 2024-24. A resolution of the Salida Colorado designating representatives authorized to coordinate with Colorado Public Health and Environment and the Colorado Water Resources and Power Development Authority regarding financial assistance matters.
Unfortunately, David Lady isn't here to share this with you.
So you were aware of the.
Sure. And so, the of Salida has a couple improvement projects on water line in the Pasquale Springs. And these are funded in part through the Water Resource and Power Development Authority. As happens, some of these agreements with the state require someone to sign them. So we to have representatives from the city authorized to coordinate with GNCWRPDA. Who are now, because our current representatives are PT Wood and Drew Nelson who are here. So we need new legal folks to sign these. So that's what this resolution is for. It's very administrative.
Not really controversial, at least in my mind.
I don't know anymore.
Which.
Don't jinx us.
Yeah, don't jinx us. I spoke too soon. Yes.
I move to approve Resolution 2024-24 designating representatives authorized to coordinate with CDPHE and CWRPDA regarding financial assistance matters.
Second.
Oh, I'll give you a question on that one. So, a motion from Councilmember Pappanfort, seconded by Councilmember Nakarato, is to approve Resolution 2024-24 designating representatives authorized to coordinate with CDPHE and CWRPDA regarding financial assistance matters. Further discussion?
Stevens?
Yes.
Cretelli?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Nakarato?
Yes.
Pappanfort?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And now for what many of you are here for, Resolution 2024-26. A resolution of the City, of the City of Salida reauthorizing the temporary closure of F Street between Sacada and Second Street and providing for a revised procedure periquers to obtain proper authorization for outdoor expansion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At the last council meeting, the majority of the council requested that this be included for your consideration. This resolution would authorize the, a two-block closure of F Street from Second to Second. We have been over a lot of this already. So if you have questions on the information that's provided in the CAF, please let me know. Staff has worked to address a number of the issues that had been brought up over the last two months. In particular, if you at the map that has been provided to you all and to get a better handle on what F Street could look or close down. So we were looking at two different sets of options. There are improvements that could be made to downtown regardless of what activity is allowed or not on F Street. So these include new lights in the street tree to add a bit more ambiance. We are working with Excel out the acorn light fixtures to, we have now is kind of dirty, they're not LED, so kind of adding a better dimension there. We do have a number of banner holders downtown that haven't been for a number of years for a number of reasons that we're getting new banners created. Regardless of the closure, that could liven up the sidewalk a bit more. If council does decide to close F Street to vehicular, no, sorry. One of the biggest things we're doing regardless of the closure, pedestrian kiosks that will allow for additional wing and directional signage along F Street. See where some of the beacons are that can help point to other amenities in town, including park, parking lots. If the council does decide to close vehicular traffic, staff was directed to identify ADA parking spots, which we did along First Street and Second, adding one additional ADA each of those, on each of those cross streets. Which does increase the ratio of non-ADA spots and bots, it increases that. We also have identified some intersection art be included at Sacada Avenue. We are at potential, the possibility of closing of the parking spots to have bike parking, knowing that more people might be riding their bikes down. Happen if F Street is not open to vehicular traffic. Vibrancy could also include, you know, allowing non-F Street vendors to, to come on and keep things going. So that's what staff has brought forward, your direction. Happy to answer any questions. We do have a period of spring break. So we're kind of a skeleton crew, but happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions for Kristi?
I just got about the bollards.
Yes.
How to pronounce it right. Is it still possible to install movable bollards this year?
And I don't have a question. I want to say staff has done a terrific job. I feel like we've sent them on a bit of a wild goose and that we've got the horse in front of the cart. And that we really need to back off street closure. It needs to remain open to traffic and that's how.
Yeah, I want to, we're having this conversation because of me. Because the one meeting I missed that affected my work very greatly was decided. And then at a work session, I think the conversation lasted maybe 15 minutes. Which is about the amount of time annually we've given towards the closure traditionally. So when it comes to a plan, yeah, we, we never, city never really had one. It was always kind of a knee-jerk response. As far as survey goes, we've had a, last year, this year, multiple surveys. Yeah, if we're going to just, you know, the results of a survey to think about the people who didn't take it, then I think this is a good opportunity to never do one again. It seems like a waste of time then, right? As far as response to last meeting on this, I did want to apologize to staff. I said things in a defensive way that hated staff in my response to not having answers. What I should have just said when asked if I had an answer was no. Or I defer to staff and I could have been a lot more polite. Indeed, I was having a bit of a tantrum. I did feel left out. Again, I'm more too representative. I, I went, when we decided that we're just going to make a really heavy decision, all the people that are here, whether for or against, or there is no real difference that means that I'm not being reached out to, to say, what is the reasoning? As the most important thing that we can do on, on council is to have a decision, what's the reason? And I didn't really, solid reasoning. Because a lot of the pro that are presented, that were presented even just at today's meeting in Citizens Comments were, were kind of presented as always going to be the. It was presented as, you know, not. These are, these are mutually exclusive. We cannot have a parade and the closure. We cannot have ADA access and the closure at the same time. And my question, how is it different opened to, the traffic opened to high schoolers drag racing between stop-stops? Different than everybody pushed onto the sidewalk? Is it based on this magic of finding parking in front of where you need to be? Never happened in my life of driving that I ever get to where I need to be in, in a car. So if those are, if those are the issue, then how, how do we solve them? Can we solve them? And I feel the main reason that I brought this up was because we use our creative district as a badge of honor. We, we have, we say we're the, in the state of Colorado, to have a downtown creative district and to have a review of, of closing it off arts to a stage, to, to businesses. Looking and or, not the word that I would use, but get a, is an attack on that badge of honor that we have. How could you not take that personally? How could we have, we're a city that has an arts and culture department. We not take that personally. And, and then just go, yeah, you're right, can do. Let's just make it a press release. I'm glad, whatever the demand, I'm glad that we had this discussion. I'm glad that we had the input and feel heard. I will also apologize to my second and a half business owners. I, I basically realized that we had kind of had a little microcosm of the entirety of the overall action in this last couple of weeks. Where I forgot that those business owners thrive off of the F Street closure. It's the, I put this stage and I'm so supportive of the F Street that I sang Come and Get Your Love by Redbone on stage to a group of a lot of people. And, you know, I did swear a lot of those people to secrecy. Maybe you didn't hear about it.
Cat's out of the bag.
There was a lot of people there though, unfortunately for me. So yeah, I am as supportive of, yeah, if somebody has an issue getting around, I will give you. Pat, for sure. If you need help, I am totally there. If that's what you need is to meet a walk, walk down with you at F Street, sure you don't fall on your face. I got you, bro. I got you. But that's not really what we're talking about. What we were talking about was this timeline, right? This, this ability to answer and solve these questions. And I just never heard a solid, I never got a solid timeline from people in a position to, to call. And that's really what it is. If we get F Street to happen this year, then I, my, it won't happen any year. So where's our commitment? Where's the city's commitment? What I want to see? I mean, this is a part of our character and it is something very important. And if there's these issues of removable wheels or barriers, barriers that attract like, retracting to the ground, like, let's talk about that. If that's the only way to do it, I would just like to just have data back that up. And experts back, back that up. I, I, you know, in order to have this discussion though, we'd need to amend for two and a half blocks. And it doesn't, it doesn't sound like that's the direction that's going to go. But yeah, I will move to, to add the addition of block between Second and Third to this resolution for council approval.
Yeah, I just had a few things. Yes, we were having this conversation over the last few weeks. I started thinking about what it would be like as an elected official during that I'll call PSM, pre-social media. I'm looking at the threads on this. It was insane. There was one thread with an 84 comments on it. And I'm just curious, raise your hand, when was the last time on social media you heard someone say something, someone did and the first person said, hey, that's a really good point. You've changed my mind. It just happened. And there was one comment, I want to read it to you because I think it summed up what we're doing up here. What this person said is from what I can tell, doesn't matter what side of this issue you're on. Either way, you're wrong times. So welcome to council. But with all that said, I really believe that we need to take the time this year. Bring different parties together. I was going to get started on this a few weeks ago, but then know which way we were going to be going, so I've held off. But I would really like to do that. Veterans of the ambulatory challenged community together who've already agreed to be part of it. Bring members of the veterans community, bring merchants, any other interested party. Figure out needs, wants, where our lines in the sand are. And take the time to be really thoughtful and come back and maybe we can come up. Not, I really think we need, this needs to be a reset year. It's true. It, you know, when we, when we put this forth, Benny, it was during the height of COVID. The governor just issued an executive order saying people were safe for being outside. So we acted quickly on it. We don't have same argument anymore. So I would just like to take the time, really try to figure this out and, and make sure that people are heard. And I'll apologize, there have been people who haven't been heard these last few years. Really would like to rectify that. That's all I had to say. Yeah.
I mean, I'd love to build on this, but I want to preface it by saying that there are people that are not going to be happy with this decision. And that's really hard. I really, really resent when people say that we don't care because decision didn't go their way. It makes it really hard to come here and give to city council to hear that. It's, it's been a painful decision. My, my family loves the F Street closure. I understand that it's important for businesses down there. It's a really, really tough decision. So I want that really clear. I also think we need more time to make a good. I think it's great that we still have such a big audience here to hear this because there's ideas about what we can do to solve this ADA problem. But one thing I heard just yesterday that I didn't know is that Chafe. But one thing I heard just yesterday that I didn't know is that chaffy shuttle, which is so important, so great to have this free service for people that need a ride. Shuttle has trouble hiring commercial drivers, have to find them right now. And a commercial, a non-commercial driver can knock somebody off on First Street because it's a state highway. So we're like two block, two block length there that some, who's ambulatory challenged has to be dropped off on either that, if they're catching a ride by chaffy shuttle. So these are the things need to be, that we need to take the time to hear out. I wanted to call today and confirm that. I don't have confirmation that that's true. I didn't have time because I also work several days. But, but to be told that we're giving it 15 minutes, I also re-comment because I feel like I've given it a lot of time in spite of multiple days. So it's just a really, really hard decision. I don't think we're ready, would like to have movable bollards so that chaffy shuttle as well as fire and police and ambulance can get in there easily. Be volunteers to give somebody that needs a ride. I don't know that that's for you either to drop them off on First Street, on Highway 291. We are hearing so much from the ADA community on this that it, it does feel discriminatory not to listen. Now there are state and national regulations about how we have to accommodate, and I so appreciate staff's work to try to do that accommodation. But hearing that, that it's a problem and we're creating a barrier by doing this, then we need to listen to that. I'm sticking by that point. So still stand where I did months ago.
Suzanne wants to.
Suzanne?
Hello, and I, I know there's quite a few people there. I certainly can't see them, but I hear they're because they spoke. I would just like to say a few comments also about that there, it's looking like from the outside that council has a lot of engine on this. I don't know that it's so much indecision on council. It's actually council listening over and over and over and making the decision with so many opinions given from people from the ADA, the business community, from public safety. We didn't even address safety as much tonight as we have in the past. I know there is not a perfect sin for this year. We cannot please everyone, just like other council said, but we should see this year as a look, a year to look to what improve can make, as Christie suggested. Either way, there can still be some parking spots added. I do support independent businesses every day, and I realize how big, how big small this are for them. And they can have a huge impact if other people are making decisions in their businesses. Many people have reached out to me, Katie with Coffee by Topo, definitely. I know she reached hers and, and she, and many others reached out, being open or closed. If there is a way, I would like staff to look into other barriers, like the gentleman who spoke, the artist spoke on the other types of, I didn't get his name. I know he had a picture, maybe there's an option there. This year I would definitely like to support our public safety. It's not a flip flop. It's not an indecision, but the ADA dance is going to be number one for me, along with public safety and timelines. We have to get a timeline because as Justin's, he does not want to see it not reopen if it is a reset year. And I want to see it open or closed again in the future, if we do say that this is a reset year, so that we can plan ahead, a great decision based on a group of people
And real quick question, you know, I've heard this talk of movable barriers. Now, my understanding is you need something that keep a car from coming through. Like I, just a couple of weeks ago, at Third and, at Third and F, there was someone who got confused and floored her car in reverse and took out a light in front of moonlight. So I mean, obviously we would want something that would.
Sure. I am not an expert on barriers, so I Googled the 1100 that Chris mentioned and sent the link to David Lady, who's our public works director and could provide more input on that. So we're happy to do more research, just as a clarification. We still are moving forward per the Main Street Live grant that you all just approved that we apply for. Those funds will be used for the improvements at Suckard, which do include the bollards next year.
Right. And if I could take a moment to remind people about some of the amenities we have in Salida that I think some people have forgotten about. We have rivers, we have Alpine, Alpine Park. We put up a big fight, lights on the basketball courts so that young people could access, you know, all the way until the park closure. Boys and Girls Club has a teen spacer. There's all kinds of games in there, you know, foosball, I don't gamer, but there's a bunch of different things in there and they serve up to age 18. So check into that. There's the arcade downtown that is made for gang out. We have two skate parks. We have downtown, we have a skate park at Centennial. So we have places for people to be outside. We are surrounded by BLM land. Everyone love to hang out in the middle of the street on asphalt. A lot of people do. They love that culture and a lot of people really hate it. But we have to fix the issues with it. You know, I'll be for people to call me, my number's on the website, to come and give you a ride. With my area agency on aging, being a transportation expert, you'd think they would allow me? I don't think they will, but maybe I could sneak one out. There are lots of places for people to gather. There are sidewalk areas that people rent on F Street. And, you know, what am I, with this all along has been equity. And I had a store owner tell me, sucks to put some kind of food joint out in front of his place. He's not loving that. That's not what his business is all about. That's detracting you of what he's doing. So when we try to solve these equity issues, it just implodes on itself. And so if we can take this year and find out how it works, was all that extra money really would bump? Because when I looked at the financials and I saw how negative it was and it was, it was in direct opposition, just a couple of months apart. But he really knows, people have the sense that because I've had this exercise, I'm doing great in business. But we don't know that. You know, it could just be, you're just going to do great anyway, either way, because it's a very popular place to be. It's a beautiful place to be. We've heard from people who are very dissatisfied and they're going to get their way this time all the while. Dan's going to be working on convening groups to see how, some of these issues, how can we get people downtown? Breaks my heart about a young woman standing there on the sidewalk, waiting for her mother to pick her up. That is not okay. Am I going to be forced to leave an empty sidewalk while I go park my car? That's not okay either. But it's a very situation. I'm not okay with that. We have to help people where they need to go. Thank you.
Thanks, yeah.
Councilmember Stevens would like to.
Councilmember Stevens?
Oh yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hi, everybody. First, I just want to say thanks for, everybody, since we've had a lot of, a lot of people speaking out on you, which is great. And I know, you know, with F Street, you know, some of these big ticket items that I, I'm still seeing that, you know, there's just really going to be able to be, you know, taken care of. Time for, for this, this closure to, to really, you know, take shape this year. You know, safety and fire are my, and, you know, of course, the handicap issues are, you know, the forefront of my decision that we're going to have to make, make tonight, which is, this has not been an easy decision for any of us up here on the, on the council or, and so I want to thank everybody, thank my council member, you know, putting in the time and thank the, the city of Salida for their due diligence on this and everything. So, but and also, you know, also in, in complete fairness, you know, Board Two, you know, downtown business owners are a big part of Board Two, which, who I represent, along with Justin there. But I have to kind of see it as a, as a whole, I see it, you know, in all fairness, I got, I want to show support for, you know, this downtown, not just the ones that are on F Street, but the ones, you know, off of F Street there on, on First Street and down Sackett and down by the river. So, you know, I gotta keep everybody when I'm, I'm making, making these decisions and then just find, you know, some of the bigger ticket items that just aren't going to be able to be, take place in time to do this safely and, and ease my mind and my council members minds to, to move forth. But it is something, you know, like everybody's kind of said, I do enjoy, my kids enjoyed it. I would like to see it here. I would like to see kind of what, what comes of a down year since we have, really have, what, what is going to happen when we, we do open the street back up? And we can, you know, have a better outlook, a better to see, you know, what sales tax businesses are gonna, are gonna thrive or, or whatnot. So just on that note, you know, I just, I just want to, you know, you know, this has not been an easy decision, one way or the other. I'm glad that it's come back to the county in this way, and we are putting it back out to the council and, you know, for full transparency, you know, vote on it tonight. So I'm, you know, excited to get to, to get to that, you know, that, that point of tonight meeting to, to figure this all out.
If there's nothing else, I think we're probably at that point where a motion would be in order.
Well, we're here. Mr. Mayor, move to approve Resolution 20 dash 26, a resolution of the city council for the city of Salida reauthorizing the temporary close street between Sackett Avenue and Second Street and providing for procedure for liquor licenses, licensee's pain, proper authorization for outdoor expansion. Dies on the vine, I guess. Yeah, I think it can just die on the vine.
Okay, so the motion fails, okay? And have my commitment that we will be having these conversations. I will be reaching out to people I mentioned earlier this week and hope to get something convened in the real near, but really, really committed, and I hope all of you are, to working together, out a way to work together in the future. Thank you for all your time and your attendance. And then next up, we have Ordinance 2024 dash 04, an ordinance of the city council for the city of Colorado amending section 4 dash 2 dash 30 AA of the Salida municipal code to modify the terms of the Affordable Housing Fund.
Evening, Mayor and Council. In summary, this, this ordinance is really just some cleanup work. Couple of years ago, we amended the inclusionary housing policy for the city, which expanded the income, household income ranges that would be targeted through inclusionary housing to be able to serve our low income populations as well as our middle income populations, all of whom are, it is unaffordable to purchase or rent homes within the city limits. And at that time, we did not actually amend the Language of Housing Fund, which the inclusionary housing fees and lieu plus your taxes go into, to expand the income beyond 80%. So what we're doing here, asking for is to send the numbers from the previously agreed upon inclusionary housing limit of 80% AMI to bring that up. Current with our current inclusionary housing policy goes up to as high as 160% AMI, so that those populous, especially on the for sale side of things, anybody under 160% AMI would benefit from our Affordable Housing Fund. And I view that currently the for sale market rates are between 180% AMI to 200% AMI and up. So that's why we include 160% in our inclusionary housing. With that, I can take any questions.
Questions for Bill.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question for Bill. When, when we look at this on the agenda, there are three different IDR. There, there's different, there's the different 2024, let me look at it exactly so that I can tell you where I'm at on the agenda. That there's the, the 24 dash 04 changes to housing fund language, 2024, oh four Salida amending Affordable Housing Fund, and then the last one, ordinance.
Suzanne, can you speak a little closer to the mic, please?
If we vote for this now, is this changing all three of these on that? Or is it just the, are they three separate ones here?
The only things that should be in your packet are the, the sort, the, the current ordinance that's being considered is a reference ordinance from 2022, which is where the, the inclusionary housing standards were updated that I was just referring to. So a, a vote approving this particular ordinance, oh four, 2024 dash oh four, it doesn't change anything that was approved in the.
On specifically on the ordinance 22 dash oh five, all of that was previously approved. So we're not, it just looks like when I went through there, especially on the tables 16D, 16F, 16, 13 dash 20, it looks like there were some things that were crossed and rewritten. And that was already done, correct? That didn't come through on, somebody already voted on that?
Yes, that is correct. So the reason it was crossed off was because that was language that was being replaced. And so when we do text amendments for the, show what's actually being replaced and what is being replaced with. So that was in 2022.
Okay, thank you. I was reading that. I just needed some clarity on, you know, the cross outs and the different footages and such. So thank you very much.
Yep, no problem. As you can see, the page two of the current ordinance, there's just one line where anything's being impact, impacted, and the 80% is being crossed out with 160%.
So this adjustment, it just gets us more in line with state level that maybe opens us up to potential, like more of that, those channels, is that?
Yes, correct. So the state has adjusted its AMI levels and thresholds for various that allow rural resort communities like Salida to apply all the way up to 160% AMI for for sale homes. Goes up to 120% AMI for rentals. So this would bring us with that as well.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I move to twenty twenty-four oh four, an ordinance of the city, what?
Just a second.
Raise his hand.
Just for, just for clarification, this is, is an approval of this ordinance on first reading. So it sets it for, it's moving the ordinance forward for second reading to be set at a future meeting.
So the amendment, so the, the motion would be if you were to a ordinance on first reading and setting the public hearing for April second?
Okay.
That was my omission. My apologies.
Is the noticing in, Bill? Public notice?
Uh, we don't have the timing right now, so we'd have to go to the next one. April nine, April, whatever that is.
Sixteenth, right, nineteenth?
Sixteenth.
Have we settled on a date?
I think it's sixteenth, right? Okay, sure. Set with such confidence.
I move ordinance twenty twenty-four oh four, an ordinance of the City Council of the Salida Colorado amending Section four two thirty A eight of the Salida Municipal Code to modify the terms of the Affordable Housing Fund on first reading to be carried for second reading to the meeting on four sixteen. And the stack, whatever I did wrong there.
Second.
So we have a motion from Capenfor, seconded by Councilmember Cretelli, and the motion is to approve ordinance twenty-four dash oh four, an ordinance of the City Council for the city of Salida, Colorado, amending Section four dash two dash thirty A eight of the Salida Municipal Code to modify the terms of the Affordable Housing Fund on first reading and set public hearing for April nineteenth. Further discussion?
April sixteenth.
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 You just made that up.
I'm here on a Friday night. But all, any of you are welcome.
Did I second that?
Capenfor?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Nakarato?
Yes.
Cretelli?
Yes.
On?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And that brings Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven, a resolution of the City Council for the city of Salida, appointing a new council member to Ward Three of the Salida City Council.
Yes, so this resolution will appoint the Ward Three, we, sorry, Wild Casper announces resignation in February. Effectively, staff set about accepting applications for Ward Three replacement. At the council meeting, Resolution twenty twenty-four twenty-three declared that vacancy. We received seven applications for Ward Three and council conducted interviews of the applicants at a work session last night. This will be paid the four hundred and fifty dollar monthly stipend that Casper was earning. We are recommending that council appoint a resident to fill Ward Three.
Questions?
I did have a question on the stipend. So it's, it's basically the theory that's adopting what council member Casper had. It's not, he got that because he voted, he voted for or couldn't apply for that, right? So you know what I mean, as far as like a new appointee is not exactly, didn't exactly vote for the new pay.
I think that's an attorney question.
Or benefit.
The law isn't absolutely clear on this. It says that a person may not have their emoluments, as the law says, increased during the term for which are elected or appointed. When you have somebody, you know, in this situation, it, it isn't addressed whether they get the bump in pay upon appointment. I think, however, the public policy is, is favor, is reflects recommendation. The, the contrary approach would invite monkey bitter people would resign in order to get their friend a higher rate of pay upon, or that kind of stuff. I know it's farfetched, but, so I, I think this is conservative and defensible.
And honors the for the term.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks for clearing that up, Jeff. Appreciate that. Any other questions before we move on to council discussion?
Oh, I always, I always had that this question. Whoever we appoint, could they technically run for two more terms in the first ten year?
No, Mike Bowers did, did that.
Oh, did ten?
Yeah.
Did ten? Cool. I didn't know that.
Yeah. All right. He was appointed when I think Scott Damon, who I, many years ago.
Oh, okay. Oh, so they're not limited then? All right.
Now, they can still serve.
Yeah.
So it doesn't technically count as their, within the term, their term. It's Harold's term.
Just extra experience.
Right. Cool. Thanks, Agneta.
Since I don't get to vote tonight, excuse me, sorry about that. Since I don't get to vote tonight.
I can drink a drink?
No, I'm, I feel for you guys because this is amazing to have seven candidates put their names forth. And I think about the last two elections, get to run against anybody. And we've seen a lot of that. So just that seven people were willing to step, it's huge. And I just want to thank all of you for that. And, you know, the other thing I wanted to mention is, you know, as I was looking at the candidate, and I think people gave great interviews last night, one of the things that really, for me, is that we had several of the candidates who have run for office or have been consistent presences in council chambers for periods of time. And I think that says a lot. And to get to vote, all I would say to council as you're making what's going to be a decision, is as you look around the dais tonight, just Ashton, you know, who is underserved or what segments of the population and which of the candidates could conceivably step in and be a voice for those folks. So that was just what I wanted out there this evening. And I'll turn it over to everybody else. Since of the hard work, you have to appoint somebody.
The only thing that's easy is administrative things.
Yeah.
Let me just say that. The rest of it's all hard. Yeah, an impress of candidates, you know, who have poured their heart and soul into coming and presenting to us. Many have gone above and beyond the pale because been here, they've been engaged, they've stepped up and run for office, they're look community already. People have stepped up with all kinds of other aids that is certainly applicable to the job because the job is solving problems very unpopular. So, you know, I just wanted to make some comments about some of the things that I was really impressed with that I heard last night. When Jackie Burnt was, question number four, which was, how do you respond to a decision that didn't go your way? She said, it's not just my decision. You know, then she would endorse and support changing decisions. You know, you, you've got to just go with the flow and that you can. That's why people have rightfully pointed out that I changed my mind because I'm listening and I'm taking in new information all of the time. Wales, I'm just so impressed with Wales Martin. She talked about representing the people even when they're not right. That's a hard thing to say. Because what we're all striving is the most good for the most people. And we certainly don't want any harm. The experience that Wales brings, working with the YMCA, it's very akin to experience that I learned working at Boys Club, to what Wolf learned being a teacher. You know, when you work with young people, you hone in on some value that they can wrap their head around. And then they know which way to go. And that helps them ward off evil coming into their life. Helps them move in a positive direction. Richard Parker, what, what a gem that he is. The word he said that was my very favorite word is fiduciary. Because that means I'm going to take care of you, it hurts me. Because I'm required by law to act in your best interest. I love hearing people own that word. I do. Corey Riggs, what a researcher and homework. You know, she not afraid of hard work and she's not afraid of controversy. How she stepped outside of her comfort zone with that river trip example, and what show that sounded like. Somebody needed to step up and start making some decision, moving things in a positive direction, or there wasn't going to be a river trip. You know, Wolf, the things that you bring, that your love and your passion for science, you know, just fantastic to have up and be willing to serve and, and share yourself with us. Mineheart, thirty-seven years paid professional in administration. And the thing I love the most for, about you is your passion for parks because you are right. We are falling behind. And it is a constant struggle, Wolfers, to get them to pony up on the land that we need to keep parks. The founders of the community had a great vision for parks, and they really got us off on the right foot. But if we don't pay attention, we are not going to be there. I don't want Fairview Cemetery to be the park where I have to go and picnic. I love it out there in Fall. You know, it's peaceful, it's wonderful, and the veterans do wonderful there. But we need our parks in town where kids can play in them and farmers markets. So I just want to say thank you to everybody. You brought much to the table and you've really thrown down the challenge.
I also remember everybody's name.
I appreciate how Elisa was able to share this amazing slate of applicants and also thank each of you for applying. It's, it takes bravery and to do that as well as to come here and interview with us. And I am so impressed with the amount of experience and desire on council. I wish we could have all seven people also serving in tough decisions up here with us every time. Tough decision, and my feeling on this, you know, for making that decision is that we able to see and hear from one of those applicants consistently throughout the time that I've been with council, almost, almost three years now, that person, and that's Corey Riggs, has put in easily as much work I have as a council member, keeping track of past issues, researching other communities, researching what's happening at the level, participating in ballot measures, both locally and at the state level. And, you know, I just talked about the amount of work that this F Street decision has for us on council. So I think there's a proven record there, an incredibly, one of the hardest workers that I know. And that's what we need to study in order to get stuff done, even on top of our multiple jobs. I think Corey Salty Riggs is the person to do it, so.
And I'll, I'll echo that by saying I, just seeing Corey for the better part of the last years, you were the only interview that we conducted could say that, say, hey, a couple of years back, do you remember when? Just you that I see, I see other people in my bracket that you've been bringing to these meetings for those years as well. You, you bring that, that, that us on council had a hard time reaching. And you've been consistently bringing that following here as well. So it's not just you showing up, it's, it's the, it's the batch community, it's the ones affected by the housing crisis, it's the ones that are doing the hard work in our community. Yeah, that's why, that's why I feel strongly. I mean, also having seen half of the meetings and knowing full well what this job is and not having any disment on it, and still wanting this makes you crazy, but so are we. So welcome to join the club. But that's exactly, that's how I'm as well.
Can anyone online?
Yes, sir?
Yes, Councilmember Montana.
I would like to echo what Alyssa had said.
Can you get a little closer to the mic?
Sure, yes. I am a little closer here, hopefully you can hear me a little better.
Yeah.
I had a few comments for, I am so excited for people to reach out and go for this position years and years of the ends there. Rich, as he has already volunteers in the, Mark wanted to increase our public safety. Adam points about F Street. Wolf wants what's best for the community, he's, his responses. So I would hope and encourage all of those people to stay and keep volunteering in our community. The first thing I would like to say is about Corey Salty Riggs, I have definitely seen her and about and at council meetings and speaking almost every meeting. She does seek out knowledge. I do feel like she, I don't want to say anything negative at all, but the positive that I would like to see is more growth before being appointed to council, where she could possibly in the future, instead of just being appointed, I would prefer to be running when the seat is available. For Wales Martin, she has been a constant also at meetings and in the community. I know she has volunteered on many places. I like that she supports communication and run for an office already. And in saying that, the office she ran treasurer, she did not win that position, but she did receive in that position. So she does have some experience running a campaign and, and going for an elected position. The lesson I would like to talk about is Jackie Burnt. I feel like she's been the most stable factor in this community for over forty years. She actually ran for the position of council in Ward Three. And so when we all talk about on council making decisions, supporting our voters, I am urging you to say, I am going to, to the constituents, the three hundred and seven of them who voted for, and say that she should be in the position to be appointed to this council. She is a representative for the people, she is, she can do this position full-time. And she, like I had said, our time, I'm urging you to say that we are listening voters at this point in appointing Jackie to this position.
Thank you.
And then in full disclosure of how I'm thinking, there's going to be some negative things said, so see about. Mr. Martinez, who I did not mention comments, gave a perfect example of what I do not want. It's like, those people are wrong. Ridiculous thing. Buddy quit but us. Somebody threw a temper tantrum. We're not doing it right. What I want on this team is somebody who is a team. And so I make a motion to appoint Wales Martin to City Council Ward Three.
Councilmember Stevens would like to comment.
Yeah, Councilmember Stevens? I think it would be a second at this point, if he was to do it.
I mean, I, I, I just wouldn't.
Yeah, where, where are we at? My, it was just her.
You can do.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't block you out, Aaron. We just kind of did a little, want to hear from you.
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead.
I'm kind of, you know, this was definitely a hard decision, again, the second one of the night. I think of going one way, then all of a sudden be thrown, thrown another, another direction. You know, I'd like to say Corey Salty Riggs. You know, I'd like to say Corey Salty Riggs, I've watched her over the years, not on council, but I've watched her in the community and then, and then just my short term on council, having her come in and speak, just seeing kind of where, you know, I met her was, you know, downtown at the High Side Bar and serving, serving drinks and food and always talking about doing what she's doing. And to see the growth that she has, has acquired in just the short amount of time that from then now is pretty amazing. I think she would be a great person to have on any council. But at this point, I do feel kind of Susan's path is I'd like to see her come back when the seat is available and run a campaign and, and kind of win it, win it that. And then second one, you know, takes me to Wells Martin. Got to know a lot about her, you know, great track record, you know, South Swiss Conservation Corps, you know. She's young, she brings that young energy and, and gets that, you know, gets that energy up on it. So I think if I were, you know, going to put it out there, my, my vote would have to go towards like Wells Martin at this point. And thank you to everybody else that ran. I mean, yeah, we had some great, great, you know, people step up. Like I said, how Dan said earlier, it was like, when this election was going on, you know, there was one person running, running for this, this spot and, you know, seven great applicants. So I'm hoping that everybody else that was on list that sent in their resumes will keep, keep that in mind and step future and hope to see, you know, see them again in the near future. So that's kind of where I stand. Thank you.
So that brings us back to the motion. Do you want to repeat it just to?
Yes, I move Wells Martin to Ward Three, City Council.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Ford, seconded by Councilmember Fontana, and the motion is to approve Res. 2024-27, a resolution of the City Council for the city of Salida, Wells Martin is Ward Three Councilmember. A further discussion?
Yeah, I guess I'll just say, I mean, yeah, in the, this direction that council to go, Alyssa, I weigh your opinion more heavily after whatever candidate we go with. And yeah, if we're going to do the logic who got voted for what, Wells certainly did receive 1,000 votes, which is more votes, or more than 1,000 votes, which is more votes than I ever got, which kind of outweighs the logic of 307. So I guess that's like my, my only thought on that.
And I would just say one more is that, that proven record, you know, almost three years of spending council, and I think the newer council members might be less aware. Corey Riggs has given almost three years of her life to participating with all. I appreciate the time given by other applicants as well and in council and starting down that road. But as far as growth goes, you know, we've had the opportunity to see that growth. Whereas with other applicants, we haven't had that opportunity to see that. We've seen a record of hard work. We have, losing my train of thought. We have had the need to see that proven record with Corey. I, I didn't have to campaign for my, for my council position. Nobody ran against me. So again, it's to all these applicants and I don't, I honestly don't feel like having campaigned necessarily proves a track record for a council. It doesn't necessarily tell me that the applicant is going to be willing to hard and to, you know, one thing, one thing I've also seen, somebody who recognizes when they make a mistake and learns from that mistake. I don't have that track record with the rest of the applicants and that's what makes me comfortable voting for Corey Salty Riggs.
Wish we had little openings.
I also believe you mentioned attending multiple on works, work sessions, which.
Right, she's already, she's already on board.
And I certainly hope that she does serve on council. You know, I hope she runs next time.
No.
Yes. Nakarado?
No.
Steven?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you to everybody. Yeah, so we'll swear in at the next meeting? Okay, okay. Okay. And that brings to council reports and we'll start with Councilmember Lee.
Um, I'd say that I'd like, I would like to be a part of the F Street closure discussion as well. Please include me in any meetings about working on those solutions. And I really want to, city can have proper buy-in so that businesses know what to plan for next year. I've just, forever being a champion of, you know, all those things happen at once, accessibility and thriving downtown businesses that can fight the scourge of a potential takeover because let's not forget that there's a shark in the minnow pond. But yeah, other than that, I also thank you for, for bearing with me in my wanting to bring this to the bitter, the very bitter and, and bearing with me on that and having the patience that's required to have robust debate in public because anything that happens not in a public meeting, I don't know if it even really happened. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fontana.
I, I don't have any new issues to direct, but I would like to make a few comments. I am definitely on the side of where I hope that this is not the end of the F Street closure and that there can be some positives that come out of this because would like to make sure as Justin's on the council or these for this, to make sure that there is an opportunity to have F slows again in the future in the right direction. And this example tonight where council cannot make everyone happy. We all just to honor everyone, everyone that voted, everyone in the city of Salida, everyone involved. And we can see we did not all have the same vote tonight, but going to support each other as a council in the future. Leadership is on it, making a decision to the best of one's ability with the information given. And I thank everybody involved, everybody who ran and all the citizens who spoke tonight. That's amazing and I'm hoping to be there and to, to be back on council. So we'll see how that goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Councilmember Nakarado.
Can't speak. Okay, I have some things. So regarding the F Street decision, I want to, what Councilmember Cretelli and Fontana just said about looking to 2025 for an F Street closure, I am not looking forward to having a session again, so I'm hoping we can have the conversation in a really different way in 25 and I hope that we can start preparing now. One of the things I'd like to do to prepare is to suggest we have an ADA committee, kind of official committee at this point in time. I don't know, I also don't know if that person kind of dedicated to this specifically.
Yes, ADA coordinator for the city. And we do actually have a safety committee made up of employees with the city. So we review the ADA trends and we, we process the grievance grievances that come in. So there, we do have some that's established.
Okay. So maybe some way for that to interact with the ADA community that we've heard from throughout this conversation as I think there are, there are pieces and parts that are to think of everything, but I think when you're part of an under-resourced city, there's got to be a way to get those, the big points out there. Like things like the 291 drop-off point, how do we bring those up to our awareness? So going a step beyond what's required. And then I just wanted to ask, and I'm sorry if I'm forgetting in the course of making these big decisions, but we have an update, Jeff stepped out, but do we have an update on the situation with Poncha?
We do. Jeff, you want to wait for Jeff? So I, Jeff left because he's back to Denver. It might need to be an executive.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
Okay.
Thank you.
Addled that for the next meeting though, for an update, an executive session for that update.
And thank you to everybody again that applied for the Ward Three position, anybody that spoke tonight. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Captain Ford.
Yes, thank you everybody for coming out and your passion for the downtown area. You know, everybody loves to be able to hang out and just let their kids run, walk streets and look forward to finding a way to make that an equitable thing where we can bring it back. You know, thanks to all the candidates and to all the people in my ward who feel unrepresented because you think I've only been minutes. I've been here 45, 48 years, depending on how you say. I've seen this town from way long ago before me born. So please feel free to reach out to me. I've got really big ears. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Stevens.
No, nothing, this thanks everybody for showing up.
Yeah. I just had a couple of things tonight. You know, first off, great news in that the city was just awarded a two-miller grant award from DOLA and it's just with the South Ark Neighborhood Infrastructure, the Phase One Plan. So had an opportunity to go down to Manitou to make the, we didn't, we didn't make it. Councilmember Nakarado and I were just there with Administrator Dune and Community Development Home, because they did the heavy lifting. They were the ones, so, well, yeah.
Just showed up with bells on.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. And so, yeah, however, they did the heavy lifting and I'm really grateful and that's a really big city. So thank you so much for all the hard work that went into that. To reiterate, we had some great candidates here. I really appreciate everyone stepping up. I mean, I kind of got lucky, I was out of the loop on that one, running the meeting, but I know that was a hard decision and I wish we could have more than one, but I only had one slot. So thank you all, really appreciate. And then finally, I just want to make sure everyone knows that I am going to be reaching out in the next days. I've already identified members of different constituencies. I know that as member Cretelli wants to be part of this. I also want to bring in air and public works at various times because we're definitely going to need that technical piece on a lot of these issues. But I'm looking forward, starting the conversation in March rather than all of a sudden there's a Chinese drill at the end of the year, you know, whenever, in beginning of the year. And that's kind of to the position we are today. So let's take the time, get a lot of feedback from the community and figure out wants, needs, where we're willing to compromise, where the land is, and figure out a path forward. I think we can do it. So thank you all. And then Treasurer Report, who I think he looks pretty happy over there. Chair tonight.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I am pretty happy. Our sales taxes are definitely positive direction. January city sales taxes increased by about 76,003% as compared to January of 2023. This portion of the Chaffee County sales tax collections also increased by 8,300, or about 3.6 increase over January of 2023. In total, the sales seats are up 9.9% higher than January of 2023, but budget estimates for the month by about 3.9%. So we're looking at, and hopefully we can continue this trend. Thank you.
We have a couple of things very quickly. Wanted to let the council know that staff is of support for the Colorado Energy Office who's submitting a grant to EPA, thing that will go to communities in Colorado that have a climate action plan. And we have one of those, so I want to support that application. Not as exciting as some of the others that we've heard about tonight, but the city of Salida recently learned that we, for the second year, received government finance accounting, office accountants, certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, which is a huge, you know, thing for government entities and all of the hard work that we put into ensuring that we are reporting, which is great. And just finally, I'm glad we're out in time. Vernix is at 9:06 PM, so you all can go out and celebrate however you want to.
Thank you. And just one quick add-on to what you just said. If anyone rebuffed, it was just six years ago or five years ago, were we a cusp of receiving a deficiency letter on, on the audit? I mean, things were bad, the turnaround and kudos to the finance department and remarkable turnaround story. So thank you. All that remains would be a motion.
For a team of excellence, I move to adjourn.
Alan Taver.
Hi.
Have a good night, everybody.